Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 7:04, we'll call the meeting to order. All of my colleagues are present. We have just adjourned an executive session with an update from legal counsel on a number of different litigation going on with the town and also to discuss the consideration of purchase, exchange, lease, value or real property at 64 Wildwood Street. And we then postponed the approval of a set of minutes to join you all here this evening. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
We have the transmitting of Treasury warrants 31, 31A, 31B, 32, and 32A. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Motion's been made in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. We also have the approval of three sets of minutes. Excuse me, four sets of minutes. We'll take them up individually. I think some of the members weren't our colleagues just yet, so we'll start with the minutes of March 26, 2018. Is there a motion?
Show move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in the second, all in favor? Three, two are gonna abstain.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have November 12, 2019. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Motion's been made in the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one correction on page seven. Where it states that, under announcements, second paragraph, Selectman Cairo opined, the third sentence down where it says, "Selectman Cairo noted that his son is currently serving in the Army." He served in the Army, not currently serving at this point in time, but he served, so it's, I don't know if you wanna make that correction in the past tense, that's all.
And with great appreciation to him, we're happy to make that correction. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Moving on to January 13 of 2020. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And finally, January 27 of 2020, is there a motion?
Show move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. And that brings us to our first appointment with our town engineer, Mr. Paul Looney. Welcome to give us an overview on Environmental Protection Agency requirements of recently enacted municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permitting. Thank you.
Just a copy of the slides. If you have any, the screen might be a little cut.
Thank you.
For anyone in the audience, too, they're here.
Paul, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Here tonight with Director of Planning and Conservation Valerie Gingrich and Operations Manager Jamie McGoldy to review updated requirements from the EPA on how we regulate and operate our municipal separate storm sewer system, which is a fancy way of saying our drainage system. There's no vote or action to be taken by the board tonight. This is a, really, it's a PSA. It helps us fulfill the public outreach requirement of the permit, which I'll get into in a future slide. So the objective's here, just to give you an outline of the presentation, I'm gonna provide a general overview of the permit. I wanna briefly review the effects of untreated stormwater runoff on our water bodies. Then I'll get into the nuts and bolts of the permit, what the requirements are, and then discuss what impacts we're going to see to our budget to comply with the permit. And then we'll go into a question and answer session if the board wishes. So it's quite an acronym, EPA, NPDES, MS4, GP. We all know what the EPA is. NPDES is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It was a program established in the 70s by the EPA under the Clean Water Act to address water pollution to our water bodies. They regulate, that regulates everything from industrial waste discharges to agricultural discharges and, why we're here today, drainage system discharges. MS4, municipal is the M, and then four S's, Separate Storm Sewer System. Now, in Wilmington, our sewer system is completely separate than our drainage system. Some of the older municipalities in the state like Boston and Gloucester, they have what's called a combined sewer overflow. It's no longer in practice. I believe it's prohibited throughout the country to combine the two for obvious health Over 250 Massachusetts cities and towns have to comply with this general permit. Certainly, all of our neighboring communities must comply with these regulations as well. The permit was a five-year permit. It was first issued in 2003, expired in 2008, and we had to keep up with it until they issued a new, or updated permit requirements, which was 2018. I wanna talk a little bit about the effect of untreated stormwater on our water bodies, but I wanna define a term first, watershed. A watershed is a, it's a land area that after or during a rainfall event sheds water to a contributing area. Whether that can be as large as the Ipswich River basin, so that whole land area that contributes water to the Ipswich River, or you can break it down to a small scale and look at just a street as a sub watershed area, where you would look at the contributing source as the catch basin grate you'll see on the side of the road, and that's literally the inlet to our MS4 system. In Wilmington, we have three major watersheds, starting in the north here in this gray area. This is the Shawshin River watershed, sheds water to the Shawshin River, which runs north to, I believe, Lawrence and the Merrimack River. This large pink area, which is most of Wilmington, is the Ipswich River watershed. Ipswich River heads east to Ipswich. And then we have this small little area down here that's in beige, that is along industrial way. That's actually in the Abajoona River watershed, which heads south to the Mystic River and eventually all its into Boston Harbor. And we break these down even further into fifteen subwatersheds, and if we use the Ipswich River here as an example, we broke this down into watersheds for Lovers Brook, Maple Meadow Brook, Mill Brook, which are all part of the Ipswich River watershed. Now, what's stormwater runoff? It's literally that watershed's response to a rainfall event. So if we think about, first case, rainfall falling on pervious surface, which is your woodland or wooded areas or lawn areas, you think of a sponge. Once the capacity is reached, all excess rainfall sheds off or runs off. Now, another case would be impervious surfaces, which is rainfall, uh, rainfall, rooftops, driveways, roadways. So there's no initial subtraction, abstraction in an impervious surface. When rainfall hits that impervious surface, it instantaneously runs off to whatever source it's draining to. Let's look at the street as an example here. Really, if you think about it, any pollutant or anything that falls on the street then, if it could be motor oil, gas, trash, cigarette butts, you name it, when it rains out, all those pollutants are getting washed right to the source, which would be in this case the catch basin grate. And if enough pollutants build up over time, it can cause an impairment to a water body. A lot of our older roadways that happen to be traveled the most, these catch basins, they discharge more or less directly to a water body. So when these streets are, you know, washed during a rainfall event, you could have cause for, or concern for impairments to those water bodies. So per the EPA, stormwater runoff represents the leading source of water quality impairments in the Commonwealth's rivers, lakes, ponds, and water bodies. They've done an assessment, EPA and MSDEP, on the water bodies in town. We broke that into this spreadsheet, and we literally broke out every segment that had an impairment listed, and then we looked at how many outfalls we have from our MS4 and to each one of those segments. And what that will enable us to do is target a pollutant of concern in a particular watershed and start looking at these outfalls to see if there's an excess of that pollutant, and hopefully we can then eradicate or at least limit the pollutant of concern that's causing the impairment. So back to the permit, that's the main focus of this permit, it's about water quality. We must develop a stormwater management program that has six minimum control measures, and those six minimum control measures, if implemented, will combat and help minimize the pollutant discharge or curb any further impairments and maybe even reverse them in some of our water bodies. So I'll go through each six briefly here. Minimum control measure number one, this is public education and outreach. We must send periodic educational messages to targeted audiences. And we use a combination of different things here, flyers, brochures, you might have gotten some in the mail with your water bill. We have targeted areas with door hangers, and we plan to host some workshops in the future for developers, businesses, and industrial uses for the next few years. So let's look at that spreadsheet again, and let's take a segment, the Shawshin River. There's an impairment in the Shawshin River of coliform. Coliform's an indicator organism that indicates that fecal matter is present in the water body. Fecal matter will have pathogens in it. If ingested, can cause certain gastrointestinal diseases. So as far as I know, there's really only three sources, human waste, pet waste, or wildlife waste. And we can control two out of the three of those sources. So what we did is, we looked at the Shawshin River watershed basin, and we distributed pet waste brochures on how to pick up after your pet, or friendly reminder anyways, to pick up after your pet, and proper septic maintenance techniques as a door hanger to those areas. Here's an example of our pet waste brochure, no, leave no pile behind, quick story, and a catch basin on a street to remain nameless. Our maintenance crew called in a report of when he was cleaning the catch basin of about 40 pet waste bags. So we reached out to our animal control officer, and with the help of our intern, we distributed this message to all the surrounding area. And then we checked in on that catch basin over the next, you know, once a month, just drove by it and took a peek inside, and we haven't found a pet waste bag in that catch basin since. So the message has worked, I guess is the point. Minimum control measure number two, public involvement and participation. This whole permit has to be transparent. All the reports, all the data, EPA requires that it's all posted online, which we've done. I encourage the public watching to definitely read the reports, provide comment, feedback, we appreciate all of it. You can go to www.wilmingtonma.gov-publicworks/stormwatermanagement to find those reports. And we also have some informational videos on the website, a presentation that our operations manager did on fertilizer usage, and some short quizzes to test your knowledge if you're feeling up to the task. Minimum control measure number three is IDDE. That is, stands for illicit discharge detection and elimination. What that is, is either a hard connection or an inlet to our system of contaminated non-stormwater discharges. Some examples of that would be a laundry line, a septic line, or maybe some industrial or commercial wastes. What's not an illicit discharge is water line flushing operations, excess runoff from landscape irrigation systems. If you had a sump pump in your basement, there's a permit to be filled out, that you can fill out, available at my office or online, that is an allowable discharge into our system, foundation drains, and dechlorinated swimming pool discharges. Some of the requirements of the IDDE control measures, we had to map our entire drainage system on GIS. That was actually done before I got here. We needed to pass a bylaw prohibiting illicit discharges, which was also done before I had gotten here. We also had to develop now an IDDE plan on how to detect illicit discharges, and then how to investigate suspected illicit discharges. Our operations manager holds an annual employee training for his staff and the maintenance crews to train them on how, what to look for when they're cleaning out a catch basin, and then how to report it, and then as a team, we'd go out and investigate any suspected illicit discharges. All these discharges are tracked through our GIS system. It's a dynamic system where you could hook up to your iPhone or your tablet, input a suspected, if there's illicit discharge suspected, input that into our GIS system, and it dynamically populates our map here. So all those red dots on the screen, those are all suspected illicit discharges of the last few years or so. Another requirement of IDDE, we have to investigate all of our outfalls. So that's every single outfall or discharge from our MS4. There's 478 outfalls, and we have to rank them, inspect them, and if there's a dry weather flow that exists, we have to screen that dry weather flow, because technically it shouldn't be flowing if there's no rainfall, right? And test it, if it screens as a suspected illicit discharge, then test that for pollutants.
What's an outfall?
An outfall is any discharge, picture a pipe on the side of the roadway from, if you think about a catch basin in the road that drains to a pipe, so it's a pipe end on the side of the road that discharges directly to the land area. You actually got a good picture of one right here. So if this is standing on the side of the road, looking down at an outfall, so that's tied into our drain system. This is just a typical inspection report that we filled out recently, and then there's a photo that goes along with it. Sometimes the, it can get a little, you have to do some investigation. We have high groundwater in a lot of areas in town. If that outlet is submerged already, how do you tell if there's a dry weather flow? Well, you go upstream to the closest drain manhole, pop the drain manhole cover, and here's another photo of drain manhole cover popped and what it looks like inside. So we can see now clearly into this drain manhole that there are no illicit discharges there, that more than likely it's a groundwater source that's creating the surcharge at the pipe end. Minimum control measure number four, construction site stormwater controls. We needed to develop regulations requiring erosion and sedimentation practices and procedures for all construction projects requiring a stormwater management permit. Huge contributor to water pollution, particularly in these areas, is construction site runoff. If you think about a construction site, all the vegetation is stripped, that exposes raw soil. When it rains out, that soil then erodes away, but it takes with it various pollutants, or it's, could be hydraulic fluid or something like that, from construction equipment or what, but these, this protocol's in place to make sure that contractors are doing their part, and then we develop site inspection procedures so we know what to look for, and then how to have the contractors address any violations of that protocol. Minimum control measure number five, post-construction stormwater management. This is for private developments. Any development that trips the permit, we have now increased water quality standards for new development and redevelopment. Also, we had to revise our thresholds for applicability, and that's basically any project that would entail over an acre of disturbance, then would be subject to these new regulations, or increased regulations, they're not new. Another part of minimum control measure number five is post-construction, we had to, on the municipality's side, look at our design standards, parking lot design standards, street design standards for room to minimize impervious area requirements where it's practical. So it's, and we undertook a part of that recently in updating our subdivision regs, where we went from a, I believe, a 32-foot section paved roadway to a 28-foot paved roadway. We also had to reassess our local stormwater regulations to promote LID techniques. LID is low-impact development. I don't know, it gets used loosely, but for, you know, under this lens, it's, really porous pavement is a good example of LID, rain gardens, it's treating runoff from the source, so porous pavement allows, it's just that, it's porous, so it allows the rainfall to infiltrate directly into a underlying sand filter that then goes into, that then drains down or percolates down into a crushed stone reservoir and has a network of underdrains all underground. So instead of just shedding the problem away, it's treating that water at the source, and it's providing, it's mimicking like a pre-development condition, almost like a woodland area, a hydrograph. We also had to provide an inventory of a minimum of five, or we need to provide a minimum of five municipally-owned sites to implement stormwater management structures, so we'll look to implement some of those LID techniques, and also look to reduce impervious area where we can. And we did this, say for Yentile Farm is a good example, that stormwater system is all LID. Minimum control measure number six, good housekeeping practices. We had to develop an operation and maintenance procedure program for, first, our parks and grounds, so we would create procedure and protocol for fertilizer, how we spread fertilizer, where we store it, lawn care and maintenance, things like that. For our public buildings, this example would be our DPW garage. We came up with spill prevention and control procedures for our fueling station, procedures for fueling for town staff, and we'll come up with some vehicle maintenance, if there's a leaky vehicle, leaking oil, make sure that's all done indoors, things like that, standard protocol for our garage. And lastly, but certainly not least, it might be the most onerous of the permit, is our municipal infrastructure, house, operation and maintenance. This includes a catch basin cleaning program, a street sweeping program, and detention pond maintenance program. We'll start with the catch basin cleaning program. We have over 3,000 catch basins in town, and we have to prioritize, inspect, clean, record the volume of debris removed, and then report all that in the annual report, and post that information online. Thankfully, we have GIS and the hard work of our maintenance crews to be successful in this part of the permit. So they're able to dynamically input this data, the debris, the amount, volume of debris removed, right online, that dynamically gets inputted to our GIS mapping system, and you can't tell from the handouts because they're in black and white, but if you look up at the screen, we've set it up so that when a catch basin is cleaned, it turns a certain color, so then I can go in, or Jamie can go in, or Valerie, we have the ability to look at this map and see, all right, if we have, say, three construction projects going on in a particular area, and we see a catch basin or cluster of them aren't cleaned this year, we can target that area, get the message out to the field guys, and make sure it gets Our street sweeping program, we've got 550 roadways over 130 miles of road, and we're required by the permit to sweep all those roadways at least once per year. Some areas were even required to sweep twice per year. Again, thankfully for our staff and also for GIS here for the tracking purposes, we're able to track what roads are swept. The map you see here is from 2019, so what this map is telling me is we've complied with that permit for 2019. All roadways were swept, and the ones that were swept twice are rendered a different Detention basin rehab requirement, we have 70 municipally-owned stormwater basins that were constructed over a 30-year period, and as we accepted subdivisions and roadways, we also accepted the stormwater practices to go along with it. We were required to perform an inspection of all 70, there's 73 basins, and what we'll look at there is, are there ways to reestablish the capacity in the basin? Are the slopes stable? Does the outlet structure need repair? Is there trash or debris that needs to be picked up in the basin? And we have to then perform maintenance on all 73 of those basins if it's needed. So I'll talk a little bit now, those are the six measures, the minimum measures required by the permit. I'll talk about what we're seeing as far as the budget implications. So we're currently requesting $50,000 as part of the town's fiscal year '21 capital budget to implement this permit. And where we project that money to be spent is mainly through the detention basin rehab program. We're looking at a 10 basins, 10 to 15 basins at about $2,000 to $3,000 a basin for rehab. We're also part of NEMCOG, that's Northern Middlesex Council of Government. It's a stormwater coalition, and the membership fee is $4,800. It's, all, our surrounding 13 communities are a part of it. I find it to be invaluable. We get educational material for free there, for this fee. They provide workshops, training programs, but we also get FaceTime with the EPA and the gentleman that wrote this whole permit, which is, it's nice to review these reports with them to make sure we're in line and we're doing what we should be doing. Lab testing and equipment, that's for the dry weather flow, and educational messages, the creation of them and distribution. So you can imagine, this is, I'm gonna just wrap things up here. This is, spans departments, this permit, to comply with it. I just wanna identify and recognize some key players here. Director of, Director of Planning and Conservation Valerie Gingrich. Valerie is managing minimum control measures number four and five, that's construction period pollution prevention and the post-development stormwater regulation requirements. And she's done a fantastic job with that. My division, Engineering Division, Bill Holt and Highland, they're managing the IDDE outfall inspections. Told you we had 478 outfalls. We have to inspect all 478 by July 2021, and they are at 70% reporting, and there's been a dozen or so dry weather flows that they've actually screened as well. Tony LaVerdi, our GIS manager, Tony's the guy behind the curtain. He's, and he's a data guy. I'd probably lose my mind without him with all this data. You could take data, right, and post it online, and it's just numbers, but you'll lose like 90% of your audience. Tony's, he's able to take that data and present it in a way, through using GIS mapping, that it's recognizable. that it's recognizable. It's kinda where like art meets science, it's in art form, and he's really, really good at his job. And last, but certainly not least, our operations manager, Jamie McGoldy. Jamie's been managing MCM number six, which is the good housekeeping practices, managing his staff, keeping up with all the catch basin cleaning, the street sweeping, and doing stuff too outside the box, fertilizer reg presentations, which I know you've all seen, managing our salt usage, O and M on all of our public facilities, it's a lot of work, and that's an understatement. I also wanna mention quickly, from 2003 to 2008, Mr. McGoldy was the project manager for this permit. We would not be in a position to succeed, a successful position now, without his thoroughness and complying with all the aspects of that original permit. And I think that's why we're, we are where we're at budget-wise, too. I talked to a lot of my counterparts at these coalition meetings, and some municipalities are scrambling around, asking for four or five times what we're asking for in our capital budget. And listening to them talk, I get the sense that they didn't follow through with the first permit, which Jamie did. So if you think about just spreading that cost, you know, over a 15-year period, first, and second, something that cost today, it was much cheaper 10 years ago. So, great job, should be commended. I know Jamie wants to recognize a few staff members that handle some of the on-the-ground stuff, so the floor is yours.
I was just gonna recognize you, actually, but. So as Paul mentioned, you know, it's really a comprehensive effort from our entire DPW, from highway, cemetery, parks and grounds, water and sewer, our garage division, and even our tree division, all of our guys are trained in illicit discharge, we try to do that training once a year, and the reason we do that is, you know, we accept tips and calls from the public that, you know, might call us and tell us that there's a spill, or somebody illegally dumping a material into a catch basin, we will accept those calls and investigate them, but really, it's on-the-ground effort, our 35 guys that work on the streets all day. So we have 35 sets of eyes going up and down every road. If they're going to cut a tree down, they've got the illicit discharge training in the back of their mind, so they'll go and take a look at it and report back to us. Wanted to specifically call out a couple of guys in our division, Jerry Lawrence, and specifically, and all of our divisional foremen, but even more specifically, our catch basin cleaning operator, Kyle Afframson, who's been doing this for several years, has really been instrumental in identifying illicit discharge suspicions for us. He knows exactly what to look for. He'll call me direct if he sees something that's not quite right. Some of the examples of things that he's found are SUDs coming out of a catch basin, so we know there's some sort of leak connection to a washing machine, believe it or not, happens quite often. We find that, that is an illicit discharge, and we correct that situation immediately. Our street sweeping operators, specifically Neil Wiering, who's been with the town for many decades, and Jay Duffy, the same, and the occasional fill-in by Phil Eno, so I'd like to recognize him as well. Even our water and sewer division, we have a vector truck in that division, so the operators, Matt Lynch and Dave Ward, frequently use that piece of equipment to clean our catch basins out, too. And it goes right down to the summer help, actually. We have a summer help stream team that's part-time help, that is tasked every summer with cleaning our streams and waterways and moving the blockages, so it's very instrumental. And just a final thank you to our finance committee for supporting our program, and department heads, obviously Valerie Gingrich, Shelley Newhouse is instrumental in this as well, right down to animal control officer Chris Sullivan, who's been helping us out with the dog waste regulations. And Paul kinda stole my thunder here, but the last thing I was gonna say was, since Paul started this second round of the permit, he's really taken it to new heights, and we're all very lucky to have him on staff. Wilmington is actually serving as an exemplary model of what the NIPD's program should be. We're getting many calls from other towns and communities, wondering how we about where we are now, and a lot of that is due to the innovation of the GIS system, and Paul and his staff, specifically Tony LaVerdi, Bill Holt in Highland. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Well, with that said, I think we've used enough of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you again for letting us use this as a platform for explaining this permit.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone like to make comment or ask questions? Mr. McCoy?
I'll just say something, I can honestly say it's above my pay grade, so obviously you folks know what you're doing, so I've got a lot of faith in you, and done education.
Kyra?
You don't realize what, you know, till you drill down and you get to the nitty-gritty, is what takes place, and yeoman's work, and thank you for what you're doing in the town. Quick question on culverts. Is, is, that's, I didn't, that's always maintained?
Not in, not part of this permit.
Okay.
But different, yeah, I guess, different requirements, it's more of a, this is more of just an inlet from the street runoff or culvert, it's just a cross connection connecting two water sources.
Okay, but that's something that you maintain, you look at?
Yeah, it's definitely still part of the drainage system.
Yeah.
So it is part of our maintenance, we make sure they're opened up. We don't typically see a lot of illegal connections into a culvert itself, usually the illegal connections are in catch basins, we're all part of the same system.
Thank you, thanks for what you do.
Mr. Eaton?
I want to thank Mr. Loney, Mr. McGoldy, and Ms. Gingrich. I did have a question, probably for you, Mr. McGoldy. I know if there's stormwater drains that are in the street, and there are leaves that are covering up, I know certainly a lot of folks around town will clear that themselves, is there any instances or any examples that you can give where you want folks calling to town if they see something that's not obvious, that's not somebody pouring something illicit down a stormwater drain?
Yeah, it's a good point, you know, for leaves covering basins, generally speaking, majority of residents will take care of that themselves, and that's really just represents a blockage, so, you know, it's in your best interest to do that, you don't want your own street flooding. But more so, if you're taking a walk in your neighborhood, and you might experience a strange odor coming from a catch basin, that's a real good indicator of either a washwater connection or pet waste, illegal dumping, so that would be something to watch out for.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Malley?
Sure, I'm not sure if I'm doing the mental math correctly, Paul, and you've come to get used to my obscure questions, but it's a five-year permitting process?
Yeah.
It's a five-year permit, and it seems like it's about five years to get through the permitting process, is that fair to say? I mean, I'm just looking at the municipally-owned stormwater detention basins, we have 70, and the budget shows that you're able to rehab or, and, you know, repair 15 a year. So are you basically always working on the next permit, once you get a permit done?
It's a great question. It, the permit term expires, but it carries, the requirements carry on through year six, seven, eight, nine, 10, so we have to, the way the permit's written, we have to continue compliance, or continue maintaining and operating the system under this current now permit until they reissue another one.
Okay.
They being the EPA.
If they change part of kind of the standards or the regulations of the permitting process, how much time do you get to kind of remedy, if there's, if you're now, if you were in compliance at the last permit, and you would now be out of compliance because of a change?
Yeah.
How, how much time do they give you to remedy that?
They, thankfully, they do have a public period, a public comment period before they issue the permit to vet out things, questions like that. I'll use IDDE as an example here, so they gave, they increased the requirements for dry weather flow and wet weather flow inspections. They, they've given us two years to do dry weather flow inspections, and I think seven years to do wet weather flow inspections, so it's, I would say it's a, you know, it's a reasonable amount of time.
Great, well, thank, thank you all for all that you're doing for this, this is amazing information that I think most of us wouldn't be thinking about as we're walking our dogs during, in the morning, I'll now make sure I'm very mindful, I always am anyway, but you don't think about pet waste causing an issue like this.
Yeah.
Mr. Hall?
I just want to recognize each of the individuals here this evening, as well as staff that have already been identified, you know, as it was noted earlier, this is some of the less glamorous type of work that goes on, you know, essentially behind the curtain, if you will, nobody's really paying attention to it, at least in the, outside of the individuals here, but clearly from an environmental perspective, it's our responsibility as public officials to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to maintain waterways that are as clean as possible, in spite of all the activities that go on, not only in the residential sector, but in the industrial and commercial sector, so hats off to each of these folks.
Thank you.
Absolutely, so I, too, wanna thank each of you for being here and for your presentation tonight, always very thorough and well-prepared presentations from you folks, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure this report can be made available to anybody in town who wants to get their hands on and comb through it if they'd like, but we really appreciate each of you being here tonight, and what you do for all the residents, and our thanks to your departments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, just a quick, quick point, would you be kind enough to allow a couple of comments that serious concern what these gentlemen here?
Right. Your point of order is out of order, thank you. Thank you, folks, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ahead of schedule for our eight o'clock appointment, so if there's no objection from my colleagues, we'll take up as many of the next agenda items, communications if we can, if that's appropriate, any objections to that as we await our eight o'clock appointment? Sounds good. Okay, without objection, Mr. Hall, we'll move into communications.
Yes, so first, under communications, we have correspondence from Terry Marciello, Director of Elderly Services, and George Hooper, Public Buildings Superintendent. This is with respect to essentially highlighting the funds that have been expended for upgrades and maintenance at the senior center from two different sources, one being town appropriation. There's actually, in the public buildings budget, each year, a line item for maintenance expense, and specifically town maintenance expense, similar to a line item for the schools. There's been funding, as you'll note in the first section of the document, $16,946.89 for a number of different items here, ranging from new exhaust systems in the restrooms, installing lighting throughout the building, HVAC unit in the kitchen, finishing the hardwood floors, and then the HVAC units in the main function area. And then separate from that is funding that, much of this is in the works, but will be done before the end of the fiscal year. Work to the kitchen area, for example, new cabinets with countertops, dishwasher, microwave, and the list goes on here, but these items are all funded through a grant that we received in the amount of $30,000.
Just, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, in the second paragraph, it says the grant was obtained by the senior center, the actual, actually, the grant was obtained by our legislative delegation, is that correct?
Yes.
So that, so that statement that's written by Ms. Marciello is incorrect?
That's, it was obtained through our legislative delegation, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Could we be kept updated when all these items are completed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, under correspondence, is a memo from Terry Marciello with regard to program hours in operation. She notes that the general hours of the senior center are 9:00 to 4:30, but the offices are open from 8:30 to 5:00, Monday to Friday. There's a number of activities that happen outside of those hours, there's a men's breakfast that happens throughout the year, 7:00 PM on the third Monday, during the months of May to October of 2019, they piloted a program where the senior center was open on Thursdays, every third Thursday of the month until 7:00, and then there are special programs that happen on Saturdays throughout the year, including a talent show, grandparents' day, and trivia breakfast. They're also looking, going forward, to extend the evening hours to begin in March instead of May, and run through October, again, on the third Thursday.
Mr. Chair, I just, in noticing this and watching the finance committee meeting with Ms. Marciello, I did wanna kind of note, I guess, for Mr. Holland, for us, as we're exploring kind of the new senior center idea and options that the town will be considering in the upcoming months, I was surprised when Ms. Marciello had noted that a lot of surrounding towns did not have Saturday hours because there was a diminished attendance, so I would just kind of wanna get a better idea, and I don't know if this would be the Elder Services Commission or Ms. Marciello directly, kind of once we have a plan for a facility, what the expectations would be on the hours of use, because I know when I had suggested it be a kind of more multipurpose building, my colleagues pointed out to me that seniors wanted access to the building all hours of the day and weekends, and in hearing Ms. Marciello say that, I was a little bit confused, because I feel like if we're going to have a beautiful new building that might have the ability to service other activities on the weekends, I would, I would want that to be explored and considered, especially hearing her say that Saturday hours wouldn't necessarily be an option because of diminished attendance, so I did wanna note that in seeing this, that I would expect that would be a discussion we'd have, kind of after we have a facility's plan, I would wanna, I would wanna make sure that that discussion is had, because we wouldn't wanna waste an opportunity if we are gonna be building a new structure to have that available for uses other than the seniors on the weekend, if that is something that's possible.
And I absolutely agree, I know at recent meeting I asked that we take up this issue at a future meeting, we didn't put it on this agenda, and I don't anticipate putting it on any near-future agendas, because I don't think it's appropriate, given the fact that town meeting is just about two months out, and we'll be making major decisions around the senior center at that time, but I think, once we do make those decisions, the residents make those decisions, we as a community, then we ought to revisit this and to see what's best, you know, I've run into seniors, just this past weekend at Market Basket, telling me they would love to, you know, Saturday mornings, because there'd be a little more room available, and I ran into one gentleman who wished it was open later in the evening. Right now, we're only open seven and a half hours a day, and so we're bursting at the seams, as we know, I think we ought to really seriously explore keeping it open later at night, and I'm glad to see that that's gonna be the case come the daylight savings, but I think we should wait until after town meeting. The town is in the process, as we all know, of putting together a very well-prepared, thought-out and article around the feasibility and design of a senior center, along with town council reviewing it for us, and I hope people will support that come town meeting, so we'll have, after that time, when the community makes a decision, we ought to revisit this, so I agree with your sentiments.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanna read briefly from the inhabitant bylaws that governs the Elderly Services Commission, it's section 23 subsection 3. The Elderly Services Commission shall establish policy recommendations for the conduct of the elderly services programming. Such policy recommendations, with the consent of the town manager, shall be implemented by the elderly services administrator, so if the elderly services commission, by my reading of this, if the elderly services commission wishes to expand the hours, then they would want to reach out and contact Mr. Hall, and at that point, I think it would be appropriate to be put in front of us, so if that's something that they want, again, I think very highly of the Elderly Services Commission, and they know better than I what the need and demand for different programming is, so if they want different hours, then I hope that they would let us know, and we can move accordingly to meet the need of the programming at the senior center.
As a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, if I may, I wasn't necessarily, I agree, I would wanna hear from the Elderly Services Commission as to kind of the hours of operation, but I think what I was also trying to maybe ask and request is a further discussion, if the elder services commission or Ms. Marciello, or, you know, the seniors in general are saying that they're comfortable with having limited hours on the weekend or no hours on the weekend, I would also want to have a discussion around what kind of policy would be in place to allow access to other community activities on the weekend. We have a Fourth of July building that's not just used by the Fourth of July Committee, we, you know, I would wanna make sure that the town as a whole would understand what availability that structure, that building would have to meet the needs. availability that structure, that building, would have to meet the needs outside of what the seniors' needs would be. And that's, I was thinking especially weekends, because we don't have a lot of indoor space that can be utilized for different activities. And so, again, not to, not to try to suggest it would be a community center in any way, because I know that, you know, that wasn't received well by my colleagues. I would, I would want to make sure that the town as a whole understood what the availability would be if there were other organizations that needed space, and the seniors decided they didn't need it during that time. And I would want that to be part of the discussion when they're thinking about hours.
Next is a memorandum from me to the board. This is just formally announcing the appointment of Christopher Posey as the deputy fire chief. I'll just read this into the record. With the retirement of Fire Chief Joseph McMahon on February twenty-second, William Kavanaugh will assume the role of fire chief on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Fortunately, I had multiple quality candidates to select from for the position of deputy fire chief. Each candidate, under consideration, completed an assessment center during which they met with panelists with whom they had no prior relationship to respond to scenarios presented by the panelists. The panelists, who were retired fire chiefs and a retired human resources director, rated each candidate's responses. Candidates were then interviewed by a panel of department heads selected by me, who provided their comments about each candidate. Finally, I met with each candidate to discuss the position, expectations, and their qualifications. I'm pleased to announce that Christopher Posey is being appointed to serve as an ex-deputy fire chief effective February twenty-four, two thousand twenty. Mr. Posey has worked for the town since nineteen ninety-two. He began serving as a dispatcher for the town before being appointed as a firefighter EMT in nineteen ninety-five and promoted to the rank of fire lieutenant in two thousand twelve. Lieutenant Posey has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in political science from Northeastern University and a master's of public administration specializing in fire and emergency services from Anna Maria College. Additionally, he has several other certifications related to fire science and emergency management. My expectation is that Mr. Posey will work closely and collaboratively with Chief Kavanaugh and other department heads for the good of the town. I also look forward to working with Chris and tapping into his experience to continue the good work of the fire department.
Congratulations to Mr. Posey, and we will be notifying the community once we schedule some time for him and Chief Kavanaugh to be sworn in.
Yes.
So we'll be making that announcement shortly as well. I think we should, we're approaching eight PM. I just want to pause, if that's okay. Our next appointment should be coming in. I hate to dive into any further. I think I could hear them in the hallway.
Mr. Chair, can we have a two-minute recess while we're waiting?
Is there a motion to recess?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order at eight oh one. Welcome back, everybody, and we are very pleased at this time to welcome our next appointment. And with us this evening, we have the Massachusetts Senate Minority Leader, Mr. Bruce Tar, and with him, State Representative Dave Robinson. So, gentlemen, good evening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, and thank you for having us, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to be with all of you once again, and we appreciate your making a little bit of time to talk to us about what we, one of the things we hold as a shared priority with regard to the North Wilmington train station.
And we appreciate that. We understand some exciting news for us, so without further ado, we're looking forward to hearing the update on the North Wilmington commuter rail station.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we bring tonight is just a very brief update. There will be lots of details to discuss over time as we move forward with the project that we're going to describe to you this evening. But the main reason we wanted to come is to give you an update on the fact that the tremendous collaboration that we've had with the board, with the town manager, and the MBTA is starting to yield results. We know that we have had, all had concerns about the public safety issue with the train blocking Route sixty-two, but we also have become keenly aware through our discussions with folks in town and through other meetings that we've had here with the Board of Selectmen about the importance of two additional things. Number one, maintaining service at the North Wilmington train station, and number two, ensuring that we have good access for folks with physical challenges at the North Wilmington train station. And so when you combine all those three things, the public safety issue of not blocking the road, maintaining service at the station, and maintaining and improving accessibility for those with physical challenges, we were facing a very complicated situation where trying to meet all of those three priorities was presenting a monumental challenge. Fortunately, we have been able to find a path forward, and that's what we wanted to come and, again, brief you on tonight, that not only addresses those three priorities, but actually maximizes the opportunities that are presented by a small reconfiguration of the station. So you may recall that we had inserted some money in a supplemental state budget, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that we thought would primarily be used to design a solution at the North Wilmington train station. However, on our last conference call, Representative Robertson and I, and we later briefed Representative Gordon on the matter, were informed that the MBTA has decided instead to commit its own funding to be able to create the platform that we need to be able to relocate the location where the train stops, so that it will no longer have to stop in the middle of Route sixty-two, and that new platform will be configured so as to be much more accessible to folks with physical challenges. Now, first of all, that enables us to use the additional, the money that we had secured in the budget to partner with the town, and we've been in discussions with Jeff about this, to be able to further enhance the project, to do additional things other than build the platform itself. You may also be wondering, how is it that a project that we had estimated to cost millions of dollars is now happening with available funds from the MBTA? And the answer is very innovative. The answer is that in another location, and we have sent pictures, which I believe Jeff may have redistributed to the board, the MBTA used bridge sections from a dismantled bridge as the structural members of the platform, and that is exactly what is intended to happen here, that we will recycle those bridge sections and put them in place to be able to create a safe platform, a reliable platform, that will enable the train not to stop in the middle of the road. So as we sit tonight, the engineering is advancing on that project. There is a weather-dependent element of the project, and that is that a no-skid surface has to be adhered to the metal from the recycled bridge sections, and because of the size of those sections, that cannot happen outside. So it has to be a temperature that's amenable to allowing the material to stick. As that happens, it will be done, and we'll move forward with the design. So I'm going to yield to my colleague here in just a minute, but I do want to point out, and don't want to miss the opportunity to point out, that this is a prime example of the collaborative things that we do together and what we can achieve when we continue to do that. Just a few months ago, we were all scratching our heads, trying to come up with a solution, and as a result of the participation of everybody in the front of this room and many, many more, we have been able to come up with what we think is a very good, cost-effective solution that will be in place sometime in the near future, and the exact timing is something that's very hard to pinpoint, but we're hoping that construction will begin late spring, early summer. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague.
Thank you, Senator. Just another quick thing I want to touch on, as Town Manager Hall once pointed out, when you disembark there, it was kind of almost a welcome to the Wild West. You're let out in the middle of the street, the train pulled away, and you're kind of stranded from everything. So as Senator Tar said, this project makes great use of recycling materials, which saves us both time and money, and we're hoping that with some of the additional funds, not just secured from the line item that we had put in the supplemental budget, but from within the T-zone planning stages, once we kind of get a firm cost estimate for the station, things that we'll also include, will include overhangs for the weather, lighting, landscaping, and we'll actually have a semblance of a real station when it comes to that part of town as well. And optimistically, and I don't want to be naive, because again, as the engineering is proceeding right now, and along with those engineering plans comes all the other costs as well, but we could also look at approving either be the sidewalk or the parking lot there as well to increase and encourage the commuters using that station, not just for their safety, but for their ease, which in turn will bring a higher quality standard of living to that neighborhood than previously offered. So, very excited about that.
Thank you very much. This is certainly very exciting news, and as you mentioned, this has been going on for quite a while now. It goes back more than maybe a year, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out that it predates me as chair, Mr. Kira was chair this time last year, and I think engaged with those conversations with you folks on the phone, the teleconference calls, and when I became chair, I thought I asked Kevin if he would stay on with those calls, and he did. So I want to give kudos to Mr. Kira as well, who has been involved in those conversations. But we really, are really appreciative of the two of you and also Representative Gordon for this great news and for this really, it's impressive, this innovative idea that you mentioned of recycling. So I think it's a win-win for everybody, but most importantly, I think it's a win for the people in North Wilmington who, who don't have to worry about an ambulance or a fire apparatus getting stuck behind a train in the future when they, when they pick up the phone and need help. So I think that's really the most important thing. I agree, it's really nice for the riders, certainly, and the people who rely on the MBTA, but I think from a public safety standpoint, this is extremely going to be well-received by our community. So I want to open it up to my colleagues. If you have any questions or comments for our delegation, Mr. Eaton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank you, Senator Tarney, Representative Robinson, as well as Representative Gordon. I know it was a little less than a year ago when we were having these conversations, and I dug back into the town Kira archives, and it was nineteen ninety, I think, where this board was trying to find a solution to the issue of the North Wilmington commuter rail station. So I do want to extend my sincerest thank yous to our state delegation for collaborating so well with this board, as well as our police and fire chiefs and deputy chiefs, and Mr. Hall and Selectmen Kira as well, for all of our respective diligence towards working towards a, a common solution to this. So I, I am very grateful. I hope that this does resolve some of the issues. I hope it's constructed very quickly, but I, it is very reassuring to see colleagues that can reach across the aisle and work towards the common goal of helping the community, and I thank you both, as well as Representative Gordon, for your continued efficient advocacy on our behalf. So, thank you.
Mr. Kira.
Yeah, Ms. Marciello. It's been, yeah, it's been quite a pleasure to serve on this committee with, with everybody and truly a collaborative and team effort, and it's great that the MBTA has found the funding to put it together. My question is on the hundred and eighty K. How is that going to maintain, since this is going to be a project that will take some time, and I know that that money's been appropriated? So how, how is that going to stay with us so that we can use that to do some of the work that Representative said and yourself about enhancing the area, lighting, sidewalks, and whatnot? So... It's a very good question, and first, let us also reiterate our appreciation, as others have, Kevin, for your help with this and your leadership on, and your persistence to help us with this. So the most important thing is that we encumber the money, and so we've been in discussions with the manager about shifting that money to the town, so, and not to the MBTA, so that the town would receive the funds and then make decisions about where to spend it and how to best do it. We're in that process right now, and the one thing that's important is to be able to transfer the funds before the end of the fiscal year. So your question is a very good one, because we have to do this before the end of July. We think we can do that, and my understanding is that Jeff has already had a conversation with some of the folks at the MBTA about what some of the desired improvements might be that are beyond the platform that we've described. Our plan is, when the engineering is much more advanced than it is today, to be able to bring the folks from the MBTA here to talk together with all of you about what that design looks like, so that it can inform decisions about what other amenities might be added. And Representative Robinson has referenced a few. We have discussed lighting and paving. One thing that's been very important in our conversations thus far is trying to develop a canopy that may be more solid and more sophisticated than what we otherwise might have there. But our belief is that those are decisions that we should make together, and so our goal is, number one, to encumber the funds before the end of the year, number two, by transferring them to the town, and number three, by working in a collaborative way with the MBTA, so that we maximize the use of their money and the money that we're going to be providing to the town. That's great. And one thing I would like to suggest with all those add-ons is a, is a safety light, you know, so that if there's an issue, that someone can pull a light and an ambulance or a police officer can respond, similar to what has been done in other areas. One of our goals in coming tonight is to be able to begin the process with the board of thinking about what those things might be, so that, again, we can move forward in a timely way and incorporate them into the project. Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Omaha.
Yes. Gentlemen, you know what I think about both of you. I appreciate the fact that you hear us and that you addressed all of our concerns. It's not, you didn't come here tonight with kind of a compromised position. You came tonight checking all the boxes of everything that was discussed being the concern for, for this platform. I love that a little bit of Boston is going to be in Wilmington, that the refurbished bridge is actually part of the old central artery. Is that correct? So I think that's amazing. I think it's a great example. As you pointed out, you know, we were initially talking about this being kind of a multimillion-dollar project... about this being kind of a multimillion-dollar project, and turning into something that is both more affordable and still addresses all of our needs. I think, you know, we all need to keep that in mind as we're kind of conquering these other issues that are in front of us, and we appreciate the collaboration that you, you bring to this. We look forward to your input into kind of some of these other projects and working together, because clearly, you know, we have a great delegation in that you hear, you hear our concerns, and you don't dismiss them in any way. And I think this is a great example of that, as well as working well together. I think this is a great example of you hearing, you know, we want safety, we want accessibility, and, you know, we want, we want something that is gonna be improved, and you, and you hit it out of the park as usual. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
I know it's all been said, but I wanna express my acknowledgement and appreciation
to you, Senator Tarr, and to you, Representative Robinson, working together to try to do your best, and you did, you delivered, and you helped us here in the town of Wilmington, and that's wonderful. And I have to echo Selectman Mahoney's sentiment that it's kinda nice that, you know, we're able to get something to the town, you know, we may not get the millions and millions of dollars, but you know, it's gonna get fixed, and that's the bottom line, it's gonna happen, which is a really nice thing. And thank you, Mr. Kira, for working along with the teleconferences with these gentlemen. And very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Eaton, you have something?
Yeah, I did just wanna echo Selectman Kira's suggestion of an emergency call box, just in case of any issues that may arise, as well as ask that, to the extent it might be feasible, that some of the vegetation clearing that happened along the Wildcat branch, some of those funds might be at least explored, providing some sort of replacement of the foliage buffer that existed between a lot of the residents along that line and the train station, the train tracks.
If I may, Mr. Chair, with regards to the buffer that was removed on the Wildcat line, there's gonna be resistance to replant any sort of the trees, not to say we're not gonna let that slide unaddressed. I had to have some conversations both with the Senator's office and Rep. Gordon's office about tackling that in the upcoming budget potentially. One of the ideas floated, and this is just the genesis, this might be a cheaper or more expeditious way to solve it, but discussion of a technical amendment which would order the MBTA to provide some sort of sound-resistant fence or barrier along the portions of the rail line there. And they're both intertwined, yes, but they're also somewhat separate, and we didn't wanna see one project become intertwined with the other, and inevitably slow both down.
Yep.
So, that's still very much so on our legislative radar. We just figured that two separate approaches to, to semi-independent issues would be. But I know, Mr. Eaton, you perhaps are the most tenacious in tracking down the tea with what was going on there, and we still hear you and the other residents that are, have had their quality of life impacted.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Much of it's been said, I'll just wanna reiterate certainly my appreciation in being able to reach out to our delegation, and the persistence that you both have shown on this issue. It, you know, it wasn't all that long ago when we had some of those conference calls and when the cost was put out there, it just seemed insurmountable, but as is always the case, is workarounds, and this was clearly a, a great workaround that's gonna allow us to meet the objective much less expensively and more, in a more timely way. So, appreciate your help.
And lastly, I just wanna add that I, not only this is a huge win for the town, but I think that it's obviously refreshing to see this happen in the way that it did, having witnessed what we all have, you know, nationally over the last couple of weeks, to know that that's simply not the case here locally with our elected officials, and you two working together, along with Representative Gordon, working together for the residents here is much appreciated. So, on behalf of our communities, we really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone would agree that public safety transcends philosophical perspectives and partisan perspectives, and it has in this case as well. So, we all agreed that public safety was our top priority, and that has driven this process, and we're very glad to be able to come tonight and talk to you about the position we're in.
And lastly, I'd like to thank both the police and fire chief. I know they couldn't, they have been down here tonight, but they're instrumental and explained to us what would prevent their apparatus from crossing the road, their procedures if the train was moved out of the street, and what have you. They really offered us a crash course and first-response approach to rail-grade crossings. So, I know they couldn't be here tonight, they had better things to do, but they owe a round of applause.
We appreciate them as well. Well, you certainly, both are welcome back here anytime, and we appreciate the update, and we know that you're certainly very busy, but we appreciate you coming by and giving us this great news.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, when it's appropriate, we'd like to schedule a meeting with the MBTA folks and the engineers, so we can come and give you a full presentation, and would also encourage you to continue thinking about what the wish list might be for other things at the station. And with that, it's a pleasure doing business with you.
Likewise. Thank you, gentlemen. Take care. All right, that's good news. Okay, we'll continue with communications. Mr. Hall?
Yes, next on the, under communications is a memorandum from me with regard to warrant articles that were submitted by petition. The first article, the petitioner is Scott Grant. This is to rezone from general business to residential 20, map 79, parcel 11A. This is five Shady Lane Drive. You'll recall, this is the former real estate Wilson Wolf property. We also have a petition article from Michael McCoy to appropriate funds relative to the construction of a senior center at map 54, parcel 110. This is the town hall property in the amount of $12,650,000. Another article submitted by Michael McCoy to appropriate funds relative to the construction of a senior center, map 45, parcel, parcels 142 A, B, C, D, E, and F. This is the property next to St. Dorothy's Church for the same, same sum. Then we have a, an article submitted by Michael Newhouse to rezone from residential 60 to highway industrial property, map R1, parcels 1, 1A, and 2A. This is property off of 125, map R2, and parcel 19A, and then map 103, parcels 24 and 24A. Portions of this property are on Ainsworth and also around the interchange at the 125 area. We have an article from Derek Santini to rezone from general business and general industrial to neighborhood mixed use, map 71, parcels 3 and 5, 100 and 102 West Street. This is the property you'll call that was discussed as a potential site for Global back a couple of years ago. And then we have a article proposed from a Jen Sindani to amend the inhabitant bylaws established as section 55 prohibiting participation of certain animals in traveling animal acts for public entertainment or amusement.
Mr. Hall, if I could, since the petitioner is here amongst us, I just wondered if I could turn to you, Mr. McCoy, and ask you, I know I was surprised to learn about this this week, but since you're here, and these, these articles have been brought forward by yourself, I wonder if you could enlighten us about your thinking?
Something, the appropriate place, it's almost like, you know, the appropriate place to really talk about this is at the public hearing, and that will be, I think, in March 17th, 7:00 PM, and the town hall auditorium between the joint, FinCom, and the joint of the planning board. That's the appropriate place. It's inappropriate for me to even talk about it up here. I would hope to think that you would know that.
Take that as a no. Okay, I was so surprised to learn of them. Okay.
Continuing on, we have a letter from Colleen O'Brien, general manager at Reading Municipal Light, with regard to land acquisition for a new Wilmington electric substation. This letter reviews the requests that our MLD has made to purchase a portion of town-owned property off of Route 125, notes the concerns about the existing Wildwood electric substation, and essentially is seeking that the board reconsider selling the property to them for a new substation. We have a correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. This is with regard to legislative breakfast. These are events that happen typically at least a couple of times a year, usually in the late winter, and then again later in the spring, and sometimes in the early fall as well. There's a number of sessions scheduled throughout the state. The closest one is Littleton, and that is on February 28th at 8:00 AM. We have a letter from Colleen, I'm sorry, from Kathleen Mahoney, from the Xfinity, and this is just advising subscribers of changes in their services. They're noting that as of March 19th, prices for three subscriptions for on-demand packages will increase.
Okay. What to consider? We have four items?
Yes. The first item, board to consider, is the signing of the warrant for the primary, presidential primary. This is submitted by the town clerk. It just notes, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the city and town, or town, who are qualified to vote in primaries, to vote at precincts 1 and 2, which would be the Boutwell Early Childhood Center, 17 Boutwell Street, precincts 3 and 4, the Wildwood School, 182 Wildwood Street, precinct 5 and 6, Town Hall, 121 Glen Road, on Tuesday, the third day of March 2020, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, for the following purposes, to cast their votes in the presidential primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices, presidential preference for this Commonwealth State Committee, Committee Men, First Essex and Middlesex Senatorial District, State Committee Woman, First Essex and Middlesex Senatorial District, Town Committee, Town of Wilmington. Hereof fail not, make return of this warrant with your doings therein at the time and place of said vote. So, the board will be asked to take a vote and sign on this, so that it can be posted, needs to be posted by the 25th of February.
Okay, is there a motion?
Still no.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Next is a request from Dana Burnham, from the Wilmington Farmer's Market. They are looking once again to establish their market at the Swain Green on Sundays beginning June 14th through October 11th. They'd like to keep the hours as established, which would be 10:00 AM and ending at 1:00 PM. They note that the July 4th holiday is falling on a Saturday, but they recognize that the market being held on the following day may be impractical, and they're asking if they could once again be authorized to use the Yentile property, as was done last year, to conduct their farmer's market on July 5th.
Is there a motion to grant the request?
Still moved.
Motion's made, thank you, is there a second? Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Next is a request from the Friends of Hockey, Field Hockey, to conduct a fundraising car wash. The original date was listed as September 20th, and then with a rain date on the 27th. As it turns out, we have another group who is looking to use the, that same location as a, with a rain date of the 20th. So, Beverly contacted them to find out if there was an alternate date, and they would like to now schedule the event for September 27th, again, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is a car wash with the rain date being October 4th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I would just note that that's also the same day as the Chamber Half Marathon, but we don't anticipate there would be a conflict in light of the route.
That's also a farmer's market day as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made, is there a second? Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Next is a request to change the name on the Flambles License from Coke Membrane Systems to Coke Separations Solutions for property located at 50 Main Street. This is strictly a change in name only, there's no change in the materials or quantities of materials to be stored. This has been run by Deputy Chief Kavanaugh, and he has no issues or concerns. This would require approval by the board and a sign-off by the chair.
Is there a motion to grant the request?
Still moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, is there a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous also. Thank you. Is this one here?
Yes.
They're signed into it?
No, just you.
Okay. Public comments, any public comments? Mr. West?
Excuse me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple of quick questions, our comments anyway, is that, one, we talked about recycling a few minutes ago in respect to saving a lot of money for the, the commuter rail station in North Wilmington. On that same line, it appears that we're gonna go forward with the senior center. And some, it may not be built for a couple of years, whatever, but eventually, there's gonna be, hopefully, a great new senior center somewhere in town. The school committee right now, the school administration's evidently talking about either, they're saying that they have a lack of room. So, they're looking at renting a couple of temporary trailers, or maybe renting a small building, there's some sort of temporary overflow for school administration activities. My comment is, is that if the town, excuse me, if the senior center goes forward and we build a new senior center, we don't, and we don't build a combined town hall, school administration building, could the Bazell School potentially be used as a school administration building with the Roman House for their overflow?
I think it's a great question, and I think that's why the majority of this board is gonna put forth a article for a feasibility study and schematic design for, to find out where the best location for the senior center will be, and I hope people will support that, so we can go through the process we did with the high school, the same process we did with the public safety building, and make sure that we find the right spot. And to your point, perhaps that frees up another space to avail us of another option.
Again, I'm just thinking of a way for a win-win, because, you know, the Bazell School is old, I'll grant that, built in the 30s, but we've, you know, it's been pretty much maintained, and probably wouldn't take a lot to keep it going, at least in the short run, while we figure out ultimately what happens with a senior center slash school, I mean, not, excuse me, town hall, school administration building. The other comment that I wanted to make real quick is, we, we keep talking about substation in North Wilmington, and it seems like that's kinda died a bit, or at least publicly died down from what we're hearing. What I was thinking is, is that would it be possible to build the substation, combine it with the highway department garage over in North Wilmington? I don't know if that's thought, I know that, you know, that's, I've looked at it just mentally, but again, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, but I was just thinking that we, you know, you might be able to get a win-win out of that, in getting, you know, a science substation, kinda combine break activity, you know, like break room activities, or whatever, other, you know, bathrooms, whatever, with the highway department to kinda, you know, make it, you know, more, a more comprehensive building.
Yeah, no, I certainly think it's a good idea. I can assure you that, I only can speak for myself, but in every single conversation I have with the town manager, that comes up. I would imagine his ears are probably bleeding from me saying "substation" every day on the phone. So, we certainly internally are talking about that. Maybe the reason we don't talk about it too much publicly, it does sometimes involve looking at private property, which you can imagine we can't discuss, but certainly, I can assure you that the manager's office, myself, and I know my colleagues up here, it remains one of the top priorities, it is my top priority, and...
the top priorities. It is my top priority and it has not died off. I can assure you that.
And again, I know, I know it hasn't died off per se, but I know it's just publicly it's been quiet. And I was just thinking that if, if there was a way to combine the two, you know, because I don't know that the substation's going to take an awful lot of land in respect to, you know, what the, what the, what the highway department has. And, you know, you'd have the advantage of if a fire engine or, you know, an emergency vehicle needed to be maintained, it's literally in the same property. And again, providing that there's enough space to do everything in a, you know, in a safe, workable, workable way. So I just bring that up. And the last thing is, is that, you know, we talk about, you know, we're talking about senior center and senior housing. You know, I'd like to see if the board would explore either putting, if there's a way to make, and again, I know, I'm not going to, you know, go with, talk about Mike's proposal per se, but if we were to put a town, a senior center somewhere that it could be surrounded or, you know, have some senior housing with it, might not be a bad idea. Either at, you know, and again, probably the two most viable locations may be here on this property in some fashion or at the St. Dorothy's property. So it might be a way to help us solve our own problems as opposed to, you know, getting 40Bs or the, you know, like the proposal in North Wilmington. If it falls through, what if somebody else comes in or what, you know, whatever the deal is. I'm just thinking if we could somehow add another 70, 80 units of, you know, and again, when I say senior house, I'm saying, you know, like a demi-waste type, type project, maybe work with people like Rep. Robinson and, you know, Senator Tarr and Rep. Murphy to accomplish, you know, see if we can get federal or state funding involved in that. So I just want to bring that, bring those up to your attention, that's all.
I appreciate you bringing that up. And I guess that just brings me back to the point that I think it's so important that the town is putting forth the article for the feasibility study for the senior center so that we can identify a possible location for, you know, something like you suggested in, in the future. So can't guarantee that's certainly going to happen at this town meeting, but certainly if that article is passed that this board is putting forward, then certainly there'll be something, we explore all options and hopefully something good will come of it.
Again, like I said, is that, you know, the, the town hall proposal might come to fruition. You know, it might get voted for at town meeting, it might get voted against, I don't know, but I'm just thinking that if it gets voted down and the senior center gets voted for, and, and again, that's just my little crystal ball. You have those two buildings, both the Roman House and the, and the Bazell School. You know, like I said, they could move the school admin into the Bazell Center. But again, I'm, I'm not saying permanently, but until we figure out a senior center and then the Roman House, whatever their storage overflow, whatever they, whatever needs they would have for it. One's still at the high school, one's literally right across the street from the high school. So just throw it out there.
And as you know, that wouldn't be the first time. We're sitting in the temporary town hall as we speak, right? Thank you. Any public comments, sir?
Good evening. Just a few comments on, just to add to Mr. West's comments. If there's a need for emergency response in public safety right now, and that's why people are concerned about a substation, we could absolutely take one garage bay and put an emergency vehicle there tomorrow. There's an office there, it'd be no problem doing that. The question is, is how serious are people wanting to address that immediate need? But my questions and comments tonight are relative to the agenda and a couple of past agendas. Tonight, we were discussing municipal storm sewer system. What I want to bring to your attention is that we have a highway going through Wilmington where millions of cars and trucks pass. You have windshield washer with methanol in it. You have oil and gas and transmission fluids and any other kind of fluids that could leak off of vehicles. And we have drainage, a drainage system from Route 93 with those millions of vehicles that drain that runoff into our land that flows right into our wat, our municipal drinking water system. And I would like to ask this board for an agenda item to discuss addressing this problem so that we can prevent our water from being contaminated and try to come up with some type of filtration system that separates these liquids, petroleums, whatever is coming off the highway and flowing into our water system. The other thing about the drainage system in town is that we have a lot of catch basins that are concrete structures that are not just catch basins, but they're catch basin dry wells. And what they do is they collect the water and they leach it back into the ground. And they have concrete structures with open bottoms on it. And the way that it works is the concrete structure is there and underneath it with the open bottom is just crushed stone. And what I would like to see is I would like to see some type of system with markers on the catch basin grates so that when the gentleman goes out there to clean them, he's not digging the stone, digging the stone and causing the structure to sink. And then when you go down the road, you see catch basin covers that are depressed or at a weird angle when people's cars and rims are hitting them and getting destroyed. And it's just a rough surface. And so I think the way to address that would be to put some type of stainless steel or highly resistant to the weather tag on there that simply says, "This is a dry well," and have this, have a book with specs. This is the depth of the concrete structure that goes into the ground and you shall not dig below this elevation so that we, we can eliminate that problem all around town. And with regard to the commuter rail, I've stated this before, that I've taken the train from Lawrence to North Wilmington and I specifically requested the conductor to let me off so that the train does not block the road. And he said, "Well, you're going to have to walk down three cars and we will, we will do that for you." And that train absolutely, 100%, with God as my witness, does not have to block that road. It's a simple fix. And all a fix would be, would be to contact the MBTA, contact our legislative delegation and say, "Listen, the next time the train engineer stops and blocks that road, he's getting fired." Because it doesn't have to happen. And the conductor, if he's going to remain on the job, is going to have to not be lazy and use his head, get to that first car and let the people from Lawrence and Havel and the other stops before North Wilmington know that this first car is for the North Wilmington people to sit. That way, the other people just go to the other cars and we don't have this ridiculous problem that's very, very easily solved. And I would like, maybe, maybe you can get a hearing. Get the MBTA down here so that they can hear it from the people in town that this is ridiculous. They're, they're, they're mocking the town and they're, they're not doing anything to prevent the public safety issue. So that's what I'll have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, we'll move to announcements. And if I may, start off with a very important announcement. One of the most important things I think we'll discuss here tonight. And that was that just hours after our final last meeting, the Eaton family welcomed a new baby into their home. I think Mr. Eaton, it was said that was still wearing his suit from the meeting at the hospital, doctors told me. So we are just so excited for him and his family to welcome their son. And I won't steal any more shine from him, but we wanted to get you a little something from the town manager's office and from, from this board to congratulate you, Sarah Hadley, and on the addition of Cole to your family. We're just so glad that everyone is healthy and doing well. So we got a little something here for you. I can't take full credit. My wife helped me out and pick it out, but you don't have to open up everything, but there's one here I'd like you to hold up. This white one here. I don't know if the camera can zoom in, but it's got fire engines on it. Because had the substation not come up a few minutes ago, I'd have brought it up with this segue. So congratulations. We're really happy for you, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball.
That's all I have for announcements. Mr. McCoy.
Yeah, I've got an announcement. I don't know if it's going to be as big as that one, but I'll do my best. And I want to wish you all the best. So like, having kids, man, it's a great institution. You know, I have an announcement to make tonight. Historically, when I have been up for reelection, in nomination papers usually become available by January 22nd religiously, I've gone down to the town hall, pulled my nomination papers, gathered all the required signatures, and returned the papers within a few days. I'm usually the first one to take out papers and I'm usually the first one to return them. This year is a little bit different. Tonight, I am officially announcing that I will not be seeking reelection to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. After I won my last election three years ago, I had a long talk with my wife and we agreed that this term would be my last. She is the only person on the planet that knew this. About eight months ago, when I volunteered to join the hockey rink committee, individuals on Facebook accused me of joining the committee only because I had an election coming up and I wanted to get votes. This is not true. All I wanted to do, and I stated back then, I just want to help the kids in our community. Just the other day, individuals on Facebook were claiming that I want to build a senior center because he's up for election and he wants votes. Again, not true. I will not be endorsing anyone. I don't have a candidate ready to emerge right after I make this announcement. I know I will be surprising a hell of a lot of people, but it's a decision I made with my wife three years ago. And any of you who know me, I usually keep my word. I keep my word always. This has been a great ride. I can see my mark all over town. I've given 33 years of my adult life to the town of Wilmington. 30 of those years as your selectman. When I owned and operated my restaurant, I gave it 31 years and I had a track record of success. In essence, I gave more time to my town and I had no regrets. In life, I realized that we're going to be dead a lot longer than we will ever be alive. I need to learn to, we need to learn to agree to disagree. And just because we have differences of opinions, that doesn't mean we need to hate each other. Everyone, and I mean everyone, can learn a lot by going, by, to get along and move forward if they so choose so. Over the span of my service to this town as your selectman, I've served through five different decades. I've made more friends than enemies over my political career. Into quote Winston Churchill, "You have enemies? Good. That means you've stood up for something, sometimes in your life." And I just wanted to make that announcement tonight.
Certainly, Mr. McCoy, we, we thank you for your service. We thank you for your many years of service. And we totally can understand. I think we can all appreciate the importance of time with family. I totally agree that life is too short and that we all ought to spend more time, as much time as we can with our loved ones. So I don't blame you for that one bit. And again, thank you for your years of service.
I can honestly say, all those years on my business and being politics, I try to spread my time with my family. I thought I did a well job with my family, tried to run a business, tried to do it in behalf of the town. So I kind of did spread myself out and I appreciate those comments and I did the best I could. Thank you.
Mr. Eaton.
Yeah, I did want, and I think it would be rude if I didn't acknowledge and thank my colleagues for the outreach and folks in the community for the reaching out and just congratulations. I, certainly Sarah did, did most of the work. I did not wear a suit in the operating room, but I did, I did think about it because I want, I want the young man to grow up with a sense of professionalism. Mr. McCoy, I did want to acknowledge your announcement. I, I know you and I didn't always agree, but there's a reason why there's five of us up here and not just one person. So I think that there is value in deliberation and, and discussion. So I do wish you all the best in your, your future endeavors and thank you for your service to this town as well. I did want to also acknowledge retiring Fire Chief McMahon as he will have been retired by the time we are meeting next. And as Mr. Hall and Mr. Vendel have mentioned, that we will be having, swearing in for a, a new Fire Chief and Deputy Chief as well. So congratulations to Mr. Posey as well as to Mr. McMahon and a happy and healthy retirement and to you, Mr. McCoy as well. And I'm sure we haven't heard the last of you, so.
I might surprise you, yeah.
Mrs. Omahaoni.
Right. So congratulations again, Jonathan, to you and your family. We're, we're happy to hear that everyone was healthy in their arrival, in their delivery. Mike, you definitely surprised me tonight. I was looking forward to having a campaign season with you this year. But I hope you enjoy your retirement. I know you've worked hard in a lot of different arenas over the years and I hope you really take the time now to enjoy your family and, and find ways to relax. I know where you live. I'm sure, you know, I'll still be seeing you when I go visit my brother.
Do you mean that in a good way, folks?
Yeah, and he's my brother's neighbor. So I hope you find ways to, to relax and really enjoy your family and not worry about anything. I hope, you know, in, in some small way, I know you, you kind of always felt like maybe you were the dissent in the, on the board, that you might have been the lone wolf at times, but I hope you feel like you're leaving it in somewhat good hands at this point, that, you know, we all try to exercise common sense. And I think, at least as long as I've been on the board for this short period of time, we've learned how to agree to disagree respectfully as much as we can when that arises. But I appreciate all the years of service that you put in and I, I hope, I wish you many years of health and happiness and relaxation with your family. I did, my announcement initially was just going to be to wish good luck to, I know the track teams are heading into states. I know DECA is heading into states. There's a lot going on to, to culminate the winter season, especially at the high school. Being, you know, a mom of high school age kids, it's an exciting time for us. And you'll, you'll be there in 15 years, 16 years maybe. So good luck to all those kids that are competing in the various things coming up in the next few weeks. We're really, as, as a, as a mother and as a, a parent and a community member, we really appreciate that you represent our town the way that you do. And we wish you all the best of luck.
Absolutely. Can't forget that we have quite the hockey team and girls' basketball team, cheerleading and swimming, so they're all doing great.
They're all going. And I can only speak to, Patrick John Omahaoni III is in the DECA states and he's also in the states for the 1000 and the 4x800 relay. So I'm really proud of him as a mom and I hope him and all his teammates and everybody.
Absolutely. Good luck.
The best of luck, as well as all the prom posing that are going on this week. Yeah, be careful out there.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Kyra.
It's been said by my colleagues, Jonathan, congratulations to you and your lovely wife. Enjoy every moment. It's a blast, it really is. Until they become teenagers and then hit the 20s, so enjoy it. Mike, congratulations. Thank you for your years of service. You know, Mike, Michael's Place, whenever someone would go to Michael's Place and say, "Hey, can you help us out? You know, we're having a party. Can you make a donation? Can you make pizzas? Can you give a gift, gifts today?" It was, it was always absolutely yes for the community and for organizations such as the Sons of Italy. And, and I'm sure that all organizations can't thank you enough for what you've done to them as an entrepreneur and with Michael's Place. A few years of service, 33 years in the community, serving, you know, with phone calls and knocking on, people knocking on your door and calling you up at all times. You've always put your, your heart first for the community and thank you for that, for your 33 years of service. Enjoy retirement.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Absolutely. Okay, we'll move to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we'll conclude with important dates.
First is February 11th, tomorrow evening. Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Public Buildings Department. February 12th, last day to register to vote on the presidential primary. Town Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 PM. February 13th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM, Public Library, Recreation, Historical Commission. February 24th, early voting, Town Hall Auditorium, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. February 28th, Thursday, February 27th is the, also early voting, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Next Selectmen's Meeting, February 24th, Room 9, 7:00 PM. February 25th, Finance Committee Meeting, Public Safety Building, 7:00 PM. This is Police, Fire and Dispatch. February 26th, Economic Development Committee, Room 9, 7:00 PM. February 27th, Finance Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. February 27th, Finance Committee Meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m., Town Clerk and IT. March 3rd is the presidential primary, polls open at 7:00 a.m. and will close at 8:00 p.m. March 3rd, Finance Committee Meeting, Shawshin Tech, 7:00 p.m. to take up the Shawshin Tech budget. February 5th, Finance Committee Meeting, Wilmington High School, 7:00 p.m. with regard to the Wilmington High School, Wilmington School Systems Budget. March 9th, Board of Selectmen's Meeting, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. March 17th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting, Town Auditorium, 7:00 p.m.
Before we adjourn, I want to yield to Mr. McCoy one more last time.
Just, just real quickly, after I read my announcement, I was supposed to look in the camera, and I was supposed to say to my wonderful wife, "Honey, it's sent." Boom, done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I appreciate all the nice, kind words, everybody.
Thank you. Absolutely. And with appreciation, will motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor? It's unanimous, good night, everyone.